This is getting hard.
Gary is coming into the panel.
David, can you see him? I guess the sun is that way.
Danny Hill's here.
As I can see, we're going to need a piece of wood I can find right now. I don't have anybody out with it. I don't even have anybody on team like you.
Yes, pretty much.
They are.
I guess those who are going to get it have already got it.
Actually, I mean, last week we opened back up some lobbies. And then you do this with us. I know they go into my room. So three month old man.
They're already there. I think that's.
There's more than we want. No kidding. This is.
That's not interesting.
Gary, on.
I am.
I am.
Yep.
Yeah.
Say that again.
Say that again.
That's it. Good.
Jimmy, I ran in Columbia. It had been like three days since December. Over sixty degrees. Which is the least in, this was the person, she didn't know when it had been less.
Yeah.
So we hadn't had that extreme cold. But it's been cold.
Yeah. We barely missed that extreme cold last week. It was, um, it was one of those things that, um, it made it kind of to the mountains and really kind of, we, we got cold, but it didn't hit us as hard here.
Can I ask you to talk about that a little bit? Just because I have, I had to talk to you last week. You have, you and Bob, thank you, Bob, were having a call around to the different people about the gas supply. I thought that was interesting. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, at some point, whatever you want to do.
Oh, you can just bring it up and operate before, if you don't mind. But this, it's been on the national news. I just thought it was interesting that how y'all were getting them.
The prices have fluctuated.
Well, that was something, wasn't it? Watching all that.
Yeah, it was, it was truly a mess. Um, they, they definitely had to back up and reevaluate, um, home from strategy around it. How that's working. That's, it's not going to work the way they wanted it to work. Technology's just not there right now.
The Green New Deal ain't gonna work.
Nah.
That's why they have blackouts in California all the time because they've got no.
That's right. I had never heard that pricing fluctuates so much, boy.
Yeah, I mean, it, it did it back in the early two thousands, uh, when one of the hurricanes came through the Gulf. And it really impacted the cost of the, cost of the gas.
It's six o'clock. We'll wait on the monitor.
Generally, he gets by six over one. It is six. He knows what times it are.
You ready? Okay, well, it's six o'clock and since we're on. Okay, I've got to be in six o'clock and since you are operating under an emergency ordinance that does not allow public attendance. I will conduct a roll call to establish to the public that we do have a forum. When I call your name, please state that you are present. Foster Sin.
Present.
Mr. Dubois.
Present.
Mr. Summer.
Present.
Mr. Glasgow.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Present.
Present.
The chair is also present. We've established that we do have a forum and we'll now call the February twenty-third Board of Directors meeting of the Newbury National Gas Authority to Order. The first item on the agenda is the invocation and I will call on Mr. Greg Summer to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for all your meaningful blessings. Thank you especially for the opportunity to come to your presence and prayer. Oh, we thank you for the beautiful day you blessed us with. Each day you give us is a gift. We thank you and praise you. Oh, we thank you and praise you for being in control. Thank you for being our rock, our salvation and all the meaningful blessings you give us. Well, I pray that you be with all of us as we conduct business. I pray, Lord, that you help us do the right thing and glorify your king. Well, I pray for citizens of each city, Clinton, Newbury, and I pray their will be done. I pray for Bob and Foster as they lead their cities, Lord. I pray for Genusie, who leads this organization. God, it's Lord, everything we do, everything we do, we just pray that your will be done. Thank you for your amazing grace.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do anybody that signed up? Okay. Next off, item on the agenda was approval of the minutes from the January twenty-sixth and the February second, uh, special call meeting. Are there any changes the board wishes to make to the minutes of these meetings? There are no changes. We have motion to accept the minutes as received. Motion from Mr. Glasgow and a second from Mr. Dubois. Is there any discussion? Here you know, I want, once again, conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Mr. Danny Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Foster Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Gary Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Greg Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Lamont Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. David Dubois.
Yea.
The chair votes yea and the motion does pass. We can have a vote. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-one operating report, January twenty-twenty-one. This time I'll give the floor to our general manager, Mr. Jimmy Katz, for this report.
Good evening, everybody. In January, our gas sales were up over the same period last year. We did see a, uh, good increase in gas sales in January due to the cold weather. The gas sales, um.
Get rid of that. I cut the wrong book.
In our interruptible, uh, and industrial customer base. And that was, uh, our growth we did see was, was primarily in the small commercial and residential markets. So again, due to the cold weather. Uh, in, um, in January, our gas sales ended the month at three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three DTs. This is an increase of over fifty thousand DTs over the same period last year. Um, and again, it was, it was contributed to the colder weather that we did see in January. Uh, January, we experienced six hundred and seventy-one heat degree days. Uh, during the month, uh, this was slightly above the norm. You basically a hundred and eighteen, uh, heat degree days higher than January of twenty-twenty. Our customer service was also up in most categories for the month. And strong sales in our appliance market allowed the authority to finish strong in the customer service category overall. Uh, our revenues were greater than our expenses for the month. And we experienced net gain in January, um, you know, which, a higher net gain in January than we did a year ago. Uh, January also had four pay weeks, uh, in the month. Uh, but in total, our overall expenses did go up in the month of January, a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars over, over January twenty-twenty. Uh, again, this, this expense is directly attributed to the cost of the gas that we ended up having to buy in January. Uh, because we bought that much more gas, the, the, the cost of the gas was elevated. As a whole, the authority is on track to meet our budget forecast for the fiscal year. Again, our total gas sold was three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three DTs. Uh, we did have, um, higher gross revenue for the month, uh, than we did in, uh, in twenty-twenty. This increase was attributed again to the cold weather. Customer service bill for the month was up eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. That was twenty-five thousand dollars higher than the same period last year. Our other revenue collected in January was down. Uh, we didn't collect but thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars for the month. Uh, basically, our cut on fees and our penalties dropped in January, uh, with individuals staying on. We didn't have as many customers coming on in January because they had already come on in the previous, in the prior months, the late, late latter months, twenty-twenty. Operating expenses, our gas cost was up about twenty thousand dollars and that's basically flat as compared to last year's prices. Uh, and those prices in January remained stable. Uh, one thing that you will, um, that you do need to be aware of, uh, we did have the event this past week where the gas supplies coming to the east coast throughout the nation were impacted by the major storms in the Midwest going down into Texas and into the Gulf. Uh, we did see gas prices elevate last week, uh, upwards of forty dollars per DT. You know, customarily, we're paying between two dollars and a half and three dollars and a half a DT from summer to winter, uh, with the gas prices, the historical gas prices over the last ten years. Fortunately, we did not have to buy any of that forty dollar a DT gas. Uh, we did a few days when it was really, really cold for long durations over several days. We did pay, you know, for one day around eighteen dollars a DT. But we're going to be able to offset that with the, uh, with the gas that we paid in the summer and, and be able to offset that to, uh, to keep our customers' rates low, we do believe. Total cost of customer service dropped slightly to, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars over the same period last year. The total maintenance cost increased ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars in January due to several system repairs had to be performed under contracted services, which, uh, which in contracted services, we actually spent twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. In addition, material expense climbed for the month, twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. The total maintenance expense was twenty-one thousand, fifty-four dollars higher than January of twenty-twenty. Any questions before I move on? Other operating expenses that we experienced in January, we did have some additional truck and vehicle expenses, uh, in January. We spent, uh, roughly eleven hundred dollars more than we did last year. We actually had two vehicle engines actually fail in January and had that expense come in. And also, we had to replace one engine. One of the vehicles where the engine failed is one of the vehicles that's scheduled to be replaced this year. We'll talk a little bit more about the vehicles in a little bit. But, uh, we did not repair the engine in that vehicle. We, we, we went ahead and just cycled it out without spending that money to repair it. Uh, the other vehicle is, um, newer and we made the decision since we didn't have a vehicle ordered to replace it this year, go ahead and do that engine repair. Other contracted services were also up. Um, we spent twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, uh, due to a portion of the annual audit expense being invoiced in January. So our audit was complete. Uh, we're going to be scheduling that, uh, in the coming months for the audit review to come in. And that expense came in in January. Our liability insurance also remained up for the month of January. As you remember, in the last few previous months, we are spreading that cost out over the month. So we did see that thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollar charge in January that we didn't see last year. And that's because we're spreading those costs out over the months instead of paying it all at one month sum during the year. And that's, that's it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is for the board to consider a resolution to extend the option to conduct business through electronic meetings. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Cook, second from Mr. Sin. Is there any discussion? Here you know, I will once again conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Um, Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Uh, the chair votes yea and the motion passes with unanimous vote. Uh, the next item on the agenda is an employee handbook change regarding Medicare supplement. And I give the floor to Mr. Katz for his explanation of the changes.
Yes. So, so basically, there is a wording change needed in the employee handbook to clarify converting the employees' health insurance to Medicare supplement policy at retirement. Uh, and we're basically asking the board to approve the wording change, uh, as was presented in your packet. Um, basically, I'm just going, for the sake of time, just, just read through this, uh, this document. It's just a few sentences. And it basically states that when the retiree reaches age sixty-five, Medicare will become the primary health insurance provider and the retiree's state health plan is automatically changed to a Medicare supplement plan. Covered benefits will continue coverage under their respective state plan. Both the Medicare supplement plan and the dependent plan coverage is at the retiree or subscriber's expense. Premiums will be based on the full rate of cost and are paid to CNNGA by the first day of each month by the retiree. They're going to pay two consecutive premiums while automatically terminate insurance in accordance with state guidelines. The retiring Medicare supplement plan may be dropped by submitting a retired notice of election with an attached copy of your Medicare card within thirty-one days of becoming Medicare eligible. We recommend that the board approve of this change.
Okay, the general manager has recommended that the board pass an amendment to the employee handbook regarding Medicare supplements as presented to the board. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
So moved. Motion from Mr. Summer.
Second.
Second from Mr. Glasgow. Was there any discussion? Here you know, I will once again conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Uh, Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Hey.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yes.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Cook.
Yea.
The chair votes yea and the motion does pass with unanimous vote. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, vehicle bid selection. This time I'll give the floor to our general manager, Mr. Katz.
Thank you again, Bob. So in early December, we started putting, after the budget was approved for the twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-one fiscal year, we, um, started putting together a bid package to submit to the dealers, uh, that were, that we were sending out the bid packages to. We chose seven dealerships in the upstate, um, to actually send those bid packages out to. That was, uh, Greenlight, Chevrolet, Stokes Trainer, Furman, Cromley, Spartanburg Dodge, Kevin Whittaker, Chevrolet, and Cooper, uh, in, in Flint. Out of those, or in those bid packages, we requested that we receive bids on multiple vehicles. One fifteen-hundred regular cab, one fifteen-hundred crew cab, a second fifteen-hundred regular cab, a twenty-five-hundred with a service body, a thirty-five-hundred with a service body, a forty-five-hundred with a service body that could be utilized for both our welding operations and our maintenance operations. And a, two of those, and also a forty-five-hundred with a dump bid. Of the bid packages sent out, we received three bid packages back. Uh, one from Furman, one from Cromley, and one from Cooper. After we opened the bids and did a review, uh, we identified the lower of the bids of those three vendors and compared that to the state vehicle bid cost. And the local dealers weren't cheaper than the state bid cost, uh, that, that did have the lower bids. Uh, we are recommending that, uh, the board approve going with the lowest bid, uh, on each vehicle independently. And, and basically what that would state is that Cooper Motor Company would be awarded the, um, the bid for the fifteen-hundred regular cab, both of them, the fifteen-hundred crew cab, the thirty-five-hundred service body, and all three of the forty-five-hundred, the two with the service body and the dump. Cromley was the lowest bidder on the twenty-five-hundred service body and we recommend that we split the bid up and actually award that particular force the twenty-five-hundred to Crom.
Okay, the general manager has recommended that we select the low bidder on each of eight vehicles we bet out. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Sin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion?
So. I mean, this is all. Eight vehicles at one time, yes, sir. And this was budgeted money that we budgeted in the, in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, that along with some additional money for the vehicle repairs and maintenance and things like that to come this year. We did not spend any money in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty to replace any vehicles. So therein lies part of the issue why we may have had some, some breakdowns this year and stuff. So you'll, you'll probably see us being a little more proactive this year in regards to identifying our vehicle needs early on and trying to get back on to a better rotation. Because like the vehicle we're replacing is well over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy thousand miles on this vehicle. And that's a lot of wear and tear on this vehicle.
How many trucks do we have?
I don't know a firm number right off, but I would say it's probably in the range of around forty. Do we have? We do not. We outsource the mechanic work and the tire work, rig work, all of that to, uh, to local, local vendors.
Any other questions or discussion? Here you know, I will conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Uh, Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Chairman, I think maybe I should recuse my vote at this time over there.
That would be acceptable. Thank you. And the chair also votes yea and the motion does pass with unanimous vote. Uh, the general manager has requested, uh, the board authorize. He wanted to recuse himself from voting. He actually works at Cooper Motor Company. As a salesman, so he's. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Grant Homes. Once again, I'll turn this over to Mr..
Thank you again. So, so basically, Grant Homes is a housing development, uh, here in the Newbury area that was previously discussed for the gas authority to do some upgrades to the cathodic protection system. It's protecting Grant Homes. Uh, Grant Homes, the, the underground piping system at Grant Homes is actually owned by the property management group that owns Grant Homes. The authority over the years has performed the maintenance on that property, on the underground system. And at that particular property currently, the cathodic protection system, the grounding bed systems where we induce current onto the steel pipe is actually failing. So what that's going to do over time is allow the steel pipe to start corroding more. This proposal is for us to, since we've been maintaining it, is to go ahead and procure the equipment to reestablish proper cathodic protection, which will be us buying a new rectifier and also installing some new ground bed equipment. Uh, the, um, projected cost of that would be, you know, somewhere short of fifteen thousand dollars. So we have requested that the board, uh, pull fifteen thousand dollars from the, uh, contingency depreciation fund for procuring and installing that equipment with all remaining funds to remain in the contingency and appreciation fund as, as we make that repair. Because it's something that we will have to, to make a repair on at some point in the year. So any questions on that project?
The president will ask questions. Now, the general manager has requested that the board authorize the manager to spend up to fifteen thousand dollars from the contingency and depreciation fund to purchase and install cathodic protection equipment at Grant Homes. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Sin. Do we have a second?
Mr. Summer now say.
Okay.
He's quicker.
Mr. Summer, and then you second.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And now we've got a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion or any questions?
How long does that process take to do?
You know, just from scheduling, it's not going to take really that long. The rectifier is a fairly simple installation. The ground bed installation, we will have to work around some other underground utilities that are in the complex. Uh, you know, probably, you know, a week to a few weeks depending. I mean, it's, it's, you know, basically, you're putting, you're laying this equipment parallel to the underground pipe and it's, it's inducing that current over there. What it does, it's basically going to be a secondary type of material that you have. The rectifier induces current on the pipe and protect it. The secondary material that will go in from a grounding perspective will actually, it'll work like an anode where it will actually take the corrosive properties of the soil and focus it to that material versus focusing it on the pipe. It's, it's simply the way that it works. One of the things that we are going to do is I'll also go back and talk to, to Grant Homes about potentially converting that, that whole system to authority on underground piping and put each individual apartment on their individual gas meters. Currently, there's only one meter on the, uh, on the actual complex. And then Grant Homes has meters on each apartment that they actually read. So we only read one meter going in there currently.
That seems pretty unusual, uh, that they only, how many of those are, that's the first time I've heard.
To, to my knowledge, there's roughly three of those systems similar in, in our territory. There may be, maybe one more, but, but you also have a similar setup with both of the, um, universities in Kansas.
So they build their own customers.
I think it's packaged into their leasing. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
They look, they keep it really warm. You should never be cold.
I'm, I'm not sure how they do their building. We build them for the guests and sold to the complex and, and they maintain everything inside the apartments.
My half in the house, they're just paying that particular bill. They just recently switched over utilities. They will also pay one bill for utilities all the time. Uh, including to the, uh, persons, uh, where they rate for.
Yeah.
But now they have an all-service bill. So I don't know if it'll be done in the future for gas or not.
And so, so the, the risk that we run as a, as a gas company, as a gas authority, is they are basically operating mini gas systems downstream of our area. We have historically maintained that underground system. And, and to be honest, it's probably best if we try to move them towards bringing that over under our umbrella. We could go in and replace that steel pipe with a different project in the future with plastic pipe and, and it gets rid of all the underground corrosion aspects of, of what's out there.
That seems like a good idea to me, long term.
Yeah, look, and I think that, you know, is with us getting this approved, this gives us the mechanism to get something in place.
That'll work.
If, if it'll work, it'll keep them protected. But as we walk away from here, we're going to Grant Homes and start having these conversations and try to, try to get them to, to move more in that direction. Because long term, that's the better option for the customers in the community and, and the individuals that live in that general area. Because if something's not maintained properly, that's when the safety risk goes up.
Any other discussion? Here you know, I will, once again, conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Uh, Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
And the chair also votes yea and the motion does pass with unanimous vote. An executive session has been requested to discuss one contractual matter regarding fountain and natural gas. An executive session has been requested to discuss one contractual matter regarding fountain and natural gas. Do we have a motion to enter into an executive session?
So, okay.
A motion from Mr. Glasgow and a second from Mr. Cook. Uh, any discussion? Here we know, now we'll once again conduct a roll call vote. Please answer yea or nay when I call your name. Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
The mayor votes yea and we are now in executive session and return to open session. Let's call the chair. Okay, well, now called the February twenty-third board meeting of the Clinton Newbury Natural Gas Authority back into open session, an executive session. The board discussed one contractual matter regarding the fountain and natural gas, uh, authority, and no action was taken. Does the board wish to take action on the item discussed in executive session?
I'd like to make a motion that we give, uh, the general manager, uh, authority to proceed with the contract to provide natural gas supplies to the fountain and natural gas.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Sin and a second from Mr. Summer. Is there any discussion? Here we know, now we'll once again conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Mr. Gary Kirkendall.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Lamont Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Danny Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Greg Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Foster Sin.
Yea.
Mr. David Dubois.
Yea.
The chair votes yea and the motion does pass with unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is a opt-out program for meter ERTs. Authority staff have recommended that the board approve an opt-out program for customers that have safety concerns with the ERT metering device. The come-up customer can request a mechanical meter that is read manually for a dismal charge of ten dollars per month to cover the labor cost, uh, with a manual reading of the meter. Do we have a motion to do so? Mr. Lamont Glasgow, quit wishing and. Second from Mr. David Dubois. Is there any discussion? Here we know, now we'll once again ask for a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response when I call your name. Uh, Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
And chair votes yea and the motion does pass with unanimous vote. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is March thirtieth in Clinton, and a site to be determined. Had not determined yet due to COVID, so we'll determine that before the meeting. Is there any further business to come before the board? Oh, yes, there is. Um, thank you. I'd like to ask the, uh, Mr. Jimmy Katz, our general manager, to present us with a review of the, uh, gas authority and board policies and present his findings and recommendations and future dates. Is that okay? All right, thank you. Uh, like I said, is there any, if there's no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
We have a motion in the second. Uh, once again, I'll conduct a roll call vote. Please answer with a yea or nay response. Mr. Dubois.
Yea.
Mr. Glasgow.
Yea.
Mr. Sin.
Yea.
Mr. Summer.
Yea.
Mr. Cook.
Yea.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Yea.
Just yea, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.